A fourth special meeting with the Board of Finance, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two hundred and thirty colors, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong. Okay, so we only have, we have a couple of things and first thing, I don't think it matters with these four people, but I just wanted to mention, I think we're gonna have to go to the raising the hand or because I will did some video and it was, people were talking over each other and it was just very difficult. So I think we're just gonna have to go back. I think we're small enough that we won't tonight, but you know what I'm saying? So let's start off with, do you wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we you're talking about for the mill rate, right? That we approve the mill rate and do I have a second minute? I'm sorry, I don't know what the new-
Well, we're gonna consider it, we're gonna discuss it. Brad's gonna tell us stuff.
Yeah, I'll consider your motion to consider the mill rate for the twenty-two, twenty-three season. But you're shooting.
All right, Brad, would you like to introduce?
Sure. So the proposed mill rate for property tax, personal property is thirty-four fifty-nine. And the proposal is to keep the mill rate for cars at thirty-two. The new state law says thirty-two forty-six. We've kept it at thirty-two for a number of years and I'm proposing we still keep it at thirty-two.
Okay.
Brad, was there anything in the budget, the state budget to go down to twenty-nine? That's what the governor was talking about?
The governor talked about twenty-nine. The legislation did thirty-four point two-six. And the reason they did thirty-four two-six is they allocated a hundred million dollars towards it. So that's why it's a goofy number of thirty-two forty-six. It's because they got there by taking a hundred million dollars that they need to pay the other districts to buy it down to the thirty-two forty-six.
So we don't get any money, right?
We will. Right now, we should get three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is the difference between our twenty-twenty-two mill rate of thirty-four twenty-six and the thirty-two forty-six. So that would, that helps us keep our mill rate at thirty-two for cars.
Um, Brad, the other day you and I talked about some, in regards to revenue, there were some things that you had kept in mind to come up with these figures. Would you share that?
So one of the things that the revenue numbers that I proposed all, or estimated revenue numbers I put out there all along keeps interest revenue at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Some of the board members that were on a year ago remember that Bob Kozlowski had an estimate to that two fifty and then the ARPA fund said you could use some of the ARPA funds for lost revenue if need be. So then the Board of Finance, well, Bob bumped it up, the estimated revenue for interest, he kept it at the four fifty. So all along I've proposed keeping it at the four fifty because we still do have the ability to use ARPA funds if we need to for lost revenue.
Are you saying that there hasn't been lost revenue from last year? Is that what you're saying?
There has been. We haven't had to use it for that yet. But twenty-two is the first year that we can use it for that. Twenty-two is not closed out yet.
What we, what we determine that, where are we? I mean, what we determine?
Is if our collections weren't enough, but I think the way we're trending with our tax collections, I think we should be able to make up the the additional two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand dollars that we budgeted for that. So so as well as like conveyance was, is up this year. The building permits are up this year. So there is other revenue that is up.
Does anybody have any questions, Brad? Okay, so how would you use an emotion? We just-
So I think Nick needs to, I'm sorry, should raise my hand. I think Nick needs to just amend his motion to make the motor vehicle mill rate at thirty-two and the current mill rate of, I'm sorry, and make the new mill rate of thirty-four point five nine, right?
Okay.
I would amend my motion for that.
Would you second the-
This is last year. This is, this is the Board of Finance.
Right, so it's current?
Apparently- Yeah.
Are you seconding that amendment?
Yeah, I'll second it. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor. Brad?
Yes.
Did you have something?
Nope, I was gonna show Dan the difference, but John explained it to him.
Yeah, I see it's better. And I think Bob was late, so we should-
Oh.
Hi, Bob.
I'm afraid, no, he was on. You heard that, all this, right? You heard everything.
I'm caught up to speed now. Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
He's really good at this.
He is good. He's, he's, he's definitely good at it.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the motion now. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. Now, the next thing is a draft of a policy that I made. Anyone wanted to take a look at it? And if you have anything that you feel should be changed or added or removed. I thought hard about this and this is something that, when I checked the charter, that I will make this up if you approve this and I will file it with the town clerk. So that it's a policy of this particular board. So, I mean, it probably will be for all the boards, but particularly this one.
Okay.
So let's make a motion to-
I'll make a motion to accept this draft.
Gated in May fourth, right?
Yep, yep, May fourth.
On use of electronic devices.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Excellent.
And we're ready for discussion?
Yes.
You know, I knew you wrote this because it was actually simple and I can understand it.
Okay, there's some other people I could see.
It wasn't an attorney, is what I'm saying. That's what I meant.
It was, it was simple. It was to the point and it-
That's what I-
Because I can go on and on.
That's all I have on it. I, I, I think that was a good point. There was way too much of the cellphone going on. If someone needs to excuse themselves, then I think that's a great thing. I support this.
I think the optics look better that we're all engaged and focused on the mission. Or not the mission, but the task.
Well, also it's, it's a FOIA thing, which I didn't know until it came up.
So here's the thing with the, obviously with the note in here, definitely not gonna support this, including the note.
Oh, tell me, tell me why.
Because, you know, basically us putting in policy that we realize everything is FOI-able is not true. And I think given the certain situation with, basically our personal communication is not FOI-able. If they're on, so this basically says, any and all communication of a member's just in Board of Finance Special Meetings are subject free. That's not true. So-
Okay, what about between members of partic- like, let's amend it. Let's revise it.
So I'm not-
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, if we wanted, if we wanted to a policy, I would, I would strike everything after the first sentence out. And I would say, we're required to keep everything on you. Because I don't, I don't see creating a policy and opening up a can of worms. When we should all be grownups and-
We should.
By the way, listen, we're new. We had our phones. We should refrain from doing it. I understand how that went that night. But I don't think that necessitates an extracurricular action to make a policy for the board.
Just so you know, the genesis of, of just having a policy was from Marty. So I did not just, you know, dream-
It is. I, I, I don't-
I, yeah, I spoke to Marty about this. I sent this to Marty and to Matt.
Well, but did it come from that or did it come from you asking?
No, 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 no. It's to establish some sort of policy. This came as an aftermath of a FOIA request that there should be a policy with every board.
Have every board or all boards-
Exactly.
Are they, are all boards, like, are we looking at the same draft electronic communication device policy for every, like, does, like, it's all in heritage and everything?
Can make their own policy, but the advice that I got from Marty was to have a policy. So that's the only reason I drafted this. So that there are no questions. I mean, it's, like I said, that's why we're discussing it.
Is there something that I should get Marty to join in on if he's the one?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll give him a call.
Just, you know, he can get on and, you know, we can talk about it.
He talked about a policy being made so there's not an issue. Because again, there was money being spent, you know, that FOI costs the town a lot of money.
True, and, and you can have anybody FOI for, really for any reason. And time to get on a phone, electronic device, I get it. Here's, here's the thing though, you know, we, we are volunteer board and I get texts from my kids and stuff and I get and, and I'm waiting to hear things. I don't wanna be disruptive to the meeting and text back and forth. I understand that. And that was disruptive. I also use my phone for-
Oh, what was more? I'm sorry.
I also use my phone for a lot of notes because I have hooked to this app. So, so I'm, I'm getting into a little gray area, right, even being able to use electronics. Because now I'm gonna have somebody saying I was texting and breaking the board policy. I, I'm just very uncomfortable with it and I'll, I'll-
No, no, I understand, I understand. I understand what you're saying.
And I agree, we should be restrained from refraining from using-
That's adults. That's, you know, that's adults.
And it says you're gonna choose yourself.
So we're gonna go back to the recognizing of our topic.
Well, what was happening is commissioners, we're talking about commissioners. I read the, the narratives and what was being said. That's where this is all coming from.
One thing was, was thrown out there during the whole thing.
Well, I heard commissioners were liars.
One in time. Hello? Hello? Order in the court, please. Well, I'm just saying that, you know, this is, seems to be a hot button and to me it just, it shouldn't be because it should just be, just something you do. But, and I don't think it's really talking about if you get a text from your, from your kid. It's like if you have to do something that's gonna take a few minutes to not engage here or texting here. Yes.
The policy says if a member needs to communicate at any time, he or she should make a request to the chair for a brief recess or or excuse themselves from the room to complete their communication at any time. So it's a simple, I need to mute, I need to mute my pain in the ass son that has texted me four hundred times, you know, trying to, you know, and I have to mute him. So are you telling me that I have to stand up to simply respond and like he's calling repeatedly, I have to stand up, walk out of the room in a button that says do not disturb or hey, sorry, I can't talk right now.
That's what we're saying.
Back in. So you're telling me that that is less disruptive.
That's not a communication. That's just putting it on mute.
It, because I'm giving him an automatic response of like, hey, kid, I can't talk right now.
Right, that's, that's not saying, hey, you know, how, how is your soccer uniform, can you find it? It's not, it's not something that's a thing. You're just putting it-
But if I'm re, if I, and I'm just, I'm telling you how I'm reading.
When Marty gets on, is Marty here?
Not yet.
Okay.
If a member needs to communicate at any time, excuse themselves from the room. To me, that just seems very disruptive. I'm fine also.
But if there is, this is like, if there is something that is a serious thing, yes, it would be appropriate.
Well, but if the phone's muted before you even start the meeting and we, and we pledged to the flag, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Nothing's, no, your son's not gonna interrupt you four times because you've already muted your phone.
Was muted. I mean, I'm playing games here, to be honest. It's muted. If a text comes through, I can still look at it. It's not disturbing anybody.
Right, right.
Listen, the whole point is we can't-
It's just not to pay-
The whole point is we're defining a policy based on the fact that we wanna get rid of the perception that, from the outside, that, oh, we're talking to each other on the phone. Right?
Or the fact that we are.
Well, it's not the-
Or the fact that we are.
Well, and actually that wasn't exactly what- Let's see, we can get into that, that whole thing. I don't think we should here.
What thing?
About what happened that night. But what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't know that going this far in a policy is where you go. I'm open-minded.
We're gonna talk to Marty when he gets-
But I'll say also this, one thing I would say, if we do move forward with this, I think we make it very clear that no votes happen with a member out of the room. If there's a discussion, yeah, but I think that goes as right.
But that's why if it's something that-
You want to jump to a, yeah.
If it's something that is going to take longer than a minute or two, we would call a recess. That's just what would happen. I mean, if some people have real problems and if they do have a real problem, I mean, it's not it's, it should be just logic, but because we have a situation, it's not anyone.
We have one situation.
It's happened, but it's happened all the time. I just didn't know it was a thing. I've been noticing texting for, ever since we started.
Well, but it's probably, it's been-
Well, because it's been, it's been stuff that's gone outside of the-
Exactly, but it became a thing.
And they give a thing one night because of that and because of the FOIs.
Right, but it is always a thing. It is always a thing. That's what I'm saying. I just had other things I was thinking about, didn't even, you know. I didn't know. So all I'm saying is it became a thing. So now we're just addressing it. And, you know, we don't have to get draconian about it, but, you know, we just have to wait for Marty.
Join in right now. Marty? Can you hear us?
He's connecting to the audio.
Unmute yourself, Marty.
You're muted, Marty.
Okay. Mr. Lawler? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is about the policy with electronic device usage. The draft that I sent you. You said it was okay. You indicated that it's a good idea to have a policy. Am I correct so far?
Yes and no. First thing is there's no doubt that I, I've said the same thing to the first selectman that we should devise some kind of policy for all the boards to follow. What I told you is when you did up your, your draft, what you asked me was whether or not you could just impose it or not. And I said, if you wanna have a policy like that, you better get the board itself to go ahead and agree to it.
That's what we're doing, so.
Well, that's up to the board. I mean, that this be done by anybody.
Right, I was aware that you communicated that to the first selectman, that there should be a policy. But because it happened with our board that we got into this whole FOIA mishegas, that's why I went ahead after I learned that you advised there should be some sort of policy. Because I don't think every board is gonna jump on it because there hasn't been a problem. So this is here for discussion and voting. We've only, you know, you're here because I wanted to clarify what you, what you and I talked about. That's all. So yes and no. Okay, let's, thank you very much.
I actually have a question for the chairman.
Oh, please.
I'm here. Thank you. Marty, with respect to the note on here, on the, you've seen the policy. The note talks about any communications to members and participants in boards are now FOI-able. If, if we put that note in something that's a policy, we vote on that. It, does that in any way affect an FOI case if one's brought against us down the line?
No, I don't think so. I think what it has to do with basically, it has to do with whether or not the FOI hearing officer and eventually a commission believe that any comments that were made in the meeting should be open to the public. And that's the issue. The issue is when you talk to somebody, whisper, even if you whisper to somebody, if you're talking about the meeting, the public has a right to know. So I don't think it makes a difference what the policy says. It's gonna be what the commission says through the hearing officer.
Okay, thank you.
So really, you know, the only question is, like we said about the note, about how we're supposed to handle it. We can get rid of that. I mean, if we're all grownups, we can, we know that we're gonna leave the, it's crazy. Do you want to say something?
I'm for, for sense. I think the last, I think the last that there is in here, if you're insisting on a policy.
I'm, I'm not insisting. We're gonna vote on it. So, you know what I mean? It's, I'm putting it out there. We don't have to have a policy. But if, but if we're going to consider it, let's either make changes or, you know, I'll move the question or whatever.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I, I, I thought I heard Marty mention that he and Matt are considering whether some form of more global policy is appropriate. I guess it seems to me we may wanna wait until they figure out what's best, right? Because this is not an issue only for the Board of Finance. And, and so if we were to hold on until they've kinda thought through it, we may be better positioned to have a consistent policy across all boards.
That's fine. That's totally fine. I would urge that to happen sooner than later and because there are a lot of boards and just as, I know I was unaware of the FOI aspect of this. I think there are other people in other boards who are also. And what it does is it just, just makes them more vulnerable to inquiry. And, you know, if you, if you could just get that going, that would be great. Just have it as a blanket policy. Is that something you would consider, Mr. Nickrobacker?
Uh, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, this headset, I'll tell, but this-
You're cutting in and out, Matt.
All right, hold on.
I can hear him.
Apple just doesn't make these things like the, that's all I gotta say. Actually, yes, when this came up, the topic, and I spoke about it. I personally have not recommended a policy, a global policy or a policy for the Board of Selectmen. It's, it's just my personal opinion that if all board members are informed that any use of a device might land them in FOI trouble, that's, that's up to them. I mean, we would hope that all board members would be respectful and attend to the meeting at hand. But I, I, I was not planning to pursue a global policy unless my colleagues think otherwise. But that's not something we've discussed at this point.
Okay, let me ask you this, Mr. Nickrobacker. What about, what if a, some sort of notice and notification, like say if people say in upfront what the policy is just for FOIA, could you not, could not a, some kind of notification be sent to the chairs of each commission? I'm only saying because there are people who don't know and who might just be innocently using their cellphones, not thinking that it's a problem. Do you know what I'm saying? Cause like, also that the chair, the chair of a board or a commission could say, by the way, you know, just a reminder.
Oh, well, yeah, right.
That's what I'm saying, just as a suggestion to mention to your boards that this is, it's only because this is, you know, it's only the past, what, ten years that we've had cellphones next to us anyway. It's not, it hasn't been a thing. Now it is. I mean, look, I honestly don't care.
If I might, this reminds me of the days when cellphones became popular and if you remember, even in this room where you guys are right now, there used to be signs up that said, no cellphone use, you know, during the meeting. But when this, this particular FOI came up and we know the individual who, who requested the freedom of information, put, made that request to, to the board, I was using my cellphone that night, but it was not for communication. I would use my calculator. So-
Right, well, we know that there are innocent uses of it, but there also were transactional things going in and not just the cellphones, but talking and things as parte, if you will.
Well, yeah, I, I, I'm not gonna dispute that. You know, if, if you, if this board wants to adopt a, a, make a policy statement on it, that, that's fine. But to answer your question, I had not considered a global policy, at least not at this point. But I'm open, I'm open to the discussion with my colleagues. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Can I just, so the town attorney, he recommended that all boards and commissions have a policy and, I'm sorry, a global policy for the town of Bethel. Is that right, Marty? It sounds like you were recommending that, that the town does something and Mr. Nickrobacker was saying at this point, he doesn't believe he wants to do anything.
I, what I said was that I thought it might be helpful at some point, yes.
Okay, and I heard Mr. Nickrobacker say-
That's not my, that's not my purview, though.
No, he just advised.
The selectmen and everybody else, not me.
I actually have a question.
Yes.
Marty, as, as I read this policy, I just noticed something. And basically the way it reads, if a member needs to communicate at any time via text, email or any other method using electronics device, he, she should make a request for a brief recess or excuse themselves. Now, that sounds permissive, correct? It's not a shovel.
Yeah, it's a, it's a should, like manners. That's all.
Now, you're, I think you're making more than what it is, to be quite honest with you. I think, you know, it's a simple, it's a simple fact. I mean, if somebody's phone rings while you're in the middle of a meeting, you either turn it off or you get up and you leave the table. It's just, it's just basically common sense. And you already know now, based on what's hap- if you're gonna be sitting there with your phone, somebody's gonna question you what you're doing with the phone. And even if it was innocent and had nothing to do with it, like what Matt said, he, he runs some numbers on his phone. Or I think one of the members here on the board indicated that they would look things up for what was being discussed. You're still gonna be put through the ringers, you know?
That goes with a computer too, right? A computer.
Electronic devices.
Well, this doesn't hook up to anything, so, but I'm still that.
No, with the, with the, with the-
Communication.
You mean the computer by who?
Meaning in the way this reads, if I, if I have my laptop open and I'm using it to look at Open Gov or whatever.
It's electronic communication devices. That's not a communication.
Right, but my computer is.
Right, but you're looking at that as-
No, but I'm saying my committee literally knows that. What I'm saying is my-
Right, so-
We get somebody harassed any way we look at it.
But it's right, we're still all subject, you're individually the FOI. So you could be talking to your son about the soccer uniform all night long and continue and the FOI is directed to you and, and you're just gonna have to provide the information. And then the FOI people say, oh, okay, it's just clean and then they walk away. So-
Well, that's if it's, a complaint is filed, which that has not happened.
So I'm saying, but that would be to the finish line, right? That's what would, would-
And then the, the FOIA commission would determine whether in fact it was an infraction of their policy. So I'd be happy to, you know, put this aside. It's not, it's not a big deal as long as everybody understands what we're doing. That's all.
It's the individual is gonna be in trouble for the FOI anyway. I mean, if, if I'm the only one that took this serious, I'm, I'm, I'm just using an example. If I'm the only one that said, oh, I'm, I turned this thing on vibrator, I'm not picking it up. And you did, you're subjecting yourself to the perception that you're communicating with somebody. It's the individual is in trouble, not the board.
But as a board, that's not exactly true because for me, as a chair of the board, it's not a good look. So I don't look at it individually.
The FOI, the penalty, the thousand dollar fine.
But you know what? I don't think the motivation should be the penalty. It's just a question of the optics of if you're on your phone, you're not paying attention to what's going on. So the, the less you, time you spend on your phone, the better.
I mean, now we've all been in meetings and somebody's sitting there talking to you, but they're doing this. They don't, you don't have their attention and it's not a productive meeting.
It's what I'm saying. It's an optic cord, which I think is important, so.
I think it's a, a very-
Part of the problem with even thinking about using it is that you're gonna subject yourself to harassment. You know, you're gonna get somebody that's got an axe to grind with a board member or with a board and they're gonna turn around and they're gonna file an FOI complaint. It'd be something that's sensitive. How are you gonna prove to them, you know, what you did had nothing to do with the meeting? I mean, look, I tried to get information from all of you. Some of you were very forthcoming and some of you weren't. You know, I, I had a kind of pull and squeeze to get information out. And a lot of it had nothing to do-
I, I say my stuff, I was just late. Never turn my homework in on time.
Look, I, I would, I mean, we can move the question. We can vote on this. We can vote it down. As long as we all know what we're talking about, I don't really care about a policy.
I think there was a motion and there was a second.
There was, so we can-
Well, I, I would wanna amend it.
To what? Take the whole note out?
And that's the whole point. Let's amend it. You know, or we can do it next time at the regular meeting. You can all think about it.
Let's think about this in the next meeting.
Let's do it.
And, and, and just so you know where my head is, definitely don't want the note in there. And I would want something in there about that if votes take place, if votes take place, somebody does have to re-
Take this, revise it. We'll all talk about it this time.
Personally, I think you have a policy in place. You open yourself up to more scrutiny when there's a policy, but somebody can turn around and be like, well, you didn't do this. And you should have, it says you should have, you should-
But that's, that's called the town charter or it's called the statute.
But you're making a policy, I don't know, you're just, to me, you're just with a policy in place, you're opening.
This policy's for the board.
And it's also just filed in town.
If someone wants to make yourself look bad and use their phone.
Well, then that's just, I think- Well, then that's just, I think it's.
But again, that's for the next meeting. We can vote on it and, you know, we can.
I, I agree, we should keep our freaking phones in our pockets.
Well, yeah.
And if we need to use them, we should walk out. But we, if anything, let's talk about this next time and then, I mean, we should govern ourselves. I'm not, I know what happened and I just don't believe like a knee-jerk reaction and creating a rule or policy every time something happens.
Not every time. This is the first time it's ever happened that a policy has been, and it was a big deal, though.
I understand. It's a big deal. But that doesn't mean that, that it's kind of like, listen, it's like government stepping in and doing something. We're, we're stepping in and we want to do a regulation to ourselves for something.
Honestly, I, I know, I hear you, but I don't see this as a regulation. I just think this is a heads up. But you know what?
Oh, like an electronic de- device regulation policy.
I thought there's gonna be a slam dunk. It doesn't seem like a big deal.
Like I said, I have no vested interest in this. I just don't want, you know, the pain and suffering of FOIA. And in that, in this sense, because it, it doesn't.
It's driving me crazy.
It doesn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It doesn't look good from people watching videos. That's all I'm gonna say. If we all understand that but if there are some amendments we made, it can be very simple and we can talk about it next time, then we can vote. And there you go. It's not a big deal. So we're done.
So, so do we need to have a?
A little table next motion.
I think.
We have to table a motion.
I don't know, with, like we did with the other thing with the organizational.
It just never, it never got to a vote, so it'll fall.
It'll, we'll just put it on the next thing, but hmm.
I make a motion.
Is that what we do, Dion?
So you're not going to vote on this at all?
Yeah, we're gonna move the discussion to the next meeting. All right.
And Nick made a motion to adjourn and I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're already voted.
What, I, just a quick announcement. I know I'm a little out of order on this, but there was a new bill that was passed recently that I thought the board would want to know about. Which is that uh, the legislative codified remote and hybrid meetings. So those are supposed to expire on April thirtieth and they will now become law. And the governor is expected to sign it. So I will be putting out uh, you know, any of the date, rule pages for all the boards, the commissions next week. And we're looking at uh the cost of equipping all conference rooms with the video equipment so we can give the public access. So thank you for the, just, just what you guys know about that.
ARPA funds. Thank you, Mr. Lawler, for attending.